We do need, we're gonna remove our second executive session with Chief Orville. And does anyone have any others they need to add? Nope. Okay. And we also need to amend the agenda to add liquor board. Anything else? Motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the select board minutes of April 3rd and the liquor board minutes of April 3rd? Is there anything?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, town managers report?
We had our tax sale on April 9th here in the town office. Only three properties have remained and all three were successfully bid on. So the town didn't have to bid on any of them.
Oh, good.
As you know, the bidder that was awarded them doesn't take occupancy of them or ownership for another year. Just a quick update on Bridge 108. This is from the public information officer. The removal of overhang on existing bridge continued. They're drilling for installation of piles on the north side and installation of piles on the south. Upcoming work, continue drilling piles, remove final pieces of overhang on existing bridge and work on north end side pile caps. In case you all, we're excited about that.
Indeed.
Attended the town manager luncheon at regional planning on April 11th. This is a new venture for RPC to hear from town managers and administrators on topics that we all encounter on a daily basis. The topic of discussions were public engagement strategies and grant opportunities. They're trying to do these every few months now. Notice of award has been signed and sent to Markowski excavating for the Plains Road Sewer Project and we are scheduled for May 2nd to sign the contract and do all the bond information. So they're tentatively looking at starting the project the end of July. So we'll keep you guys updated on that. Just a couple other things I wanted to add on. And I was on vacation last week, so this was a little short. I did give Alicia a copy of the energy audit that was done in December. So I'll email you guys and if anyone has copies, let me know. And also, we, along with every other town in Vermont, received a public records request from Vermont Legal Aid on... They are concerned that towns and tax sales are taking away houses from poverty-stricken people. And they've requested grand list stuff and tax sales and tax collector deeds and all these things as far back as 2018. So we've consulted with our attorney on it because they wanted us to do it for free and we're like, no. So we're trying to figure out how, we haven't heard back from them. So Helen sent an email out to them yesterday saying, we have no idea how much this is gonna cost with the, you know, but you know, if we're doing grand list, that's 600 pages or whatever, so. So we'll see. I haven't heard anything from other towns about this yet, but I know it was statewide. That's really all I have. And then I just did some little things for you guys when we get to some items, other agenda items, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, could you explain the last one to me again? Who's requesting this? And they say that they're losing housing, affordable housing?
So Vermont Legal Aid, who, you know, they represent people that usually can't afford attorneys, is requesting to see if tax sales are being fair or that municipalities are taking away properties from folks that are poverty-stricken or low income and...
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Are they offering to pay the taxes on it?
I don't believe so. But you know, one thing with that though is, Anne, right when I came in, like Anne was really successful with using those state programs for, I think it was a V...
Oh, V.
...happened with stuff to get money for, I mean, she was really aggressive with it, so. To only have three properties go to tax sale, that's a pretty big deal. But she got a lot of money for a lot of people to get, you know, out of the red, so.
Those three weren't occupied or fit for occupancy?
One was a rental. And one is still a rental, so. The other two, nope. One had a roof cave, then one a tree was growing through the porch, so.
Yes, I don't think it was possible to have these.
No, there was no one living in them. So, just a lot of work for, you know, the town clerks.
True.
Yeah.
It's kind of pointless.
It's a good question asking.
Any select board member remarks? Well, I guess I would just remind people that Tuesday, the 30th, is the second school budget vote here, 7 to 7. I did go to the budget information meeting last night at Otter Valley and there was only seven people that showed up from what, six, seven towns in our district. So that was disappointing.
So Tuesday, next?
Yeah, and so they lowered it just by 1%.
There was a good article in the Herald today from Governor Scott on the whole school education tax piece. That's definitely worth reading, so.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is an issue at the state level, but I think at the local level, it could be tightening up a little more too.
Yeah, yeah.
Any public comment? Anybody reading that? Okay, alright, we open? Alright, we have no old business, new business, we have Marty Pinkowski.
Is Marty here? So I don't know what this was for. He was, he asked to be on the agenda and that was it. So I assume when he was coming.
Five dollars, right there.
Smart, yeah. Damn.
With 5 bucks right there.
She's always grabbing it.
Tom, I can be bought by a little bit more.
Small bills are falling off.
Yeah.
Alright, well then I guess we'll just need to hear back from him if he's interested. Okay, so we have two coin drop requests. One's June 22nd for the American Cancer Society and then July 6th for first response. Those are really close together. Do we know what, what's our calendar so far? Because we have the Humane Society and the library are already scheduled, correct?
I believe so.
There's new policy too as far as...
It's timing, so, yeah, they're well within it for the timing. What were we asked for, like three weeks or something before now?
Oh, I thought it was...
One month or so.
Well, it's like one a month, right?
Is it?
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, they're close together, but it's two different months, so.
That's, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve both of these coin droppers.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Conflicts of interest and ethical conduct policy approval.
So the...
This is, sorry to interrupt, is this gonna be redundant with what the state is trying to do?
This is hopefully going to help us with that. So I don't know if you folks have been following, there's a big bill at the State House right now with this code of that model ethics policy. The bill's like 60 pages long and it's requiring like, if it passes like mandatory training for any town employees, officials, appointed, elected, whatever. And it's pretty, it's pretty intensive for what they want to do for training. So we went through our policies just to see if we had one and we didn't. So this is the league model and really all we did was put our town of Pittsford name in here. But it's pretty boilerplate. It's very similar to a lot of the language that's in our personnel policy anyway. But having a standalone, you know...
True, we got a policy.
Yeah, we've looked and looked and looked and we couldn't find it, so.
Might be one that didn't get updated and...
That's possible.
So, if the board chooses, you know, we...
I read that one, I don't have a problem with this one.
It's pretty straightforward. We'll post it on the town website, 200 policies, so.
We need a motion to adopt it?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, approval of, oh, potential excavator purchase.
So Chad and I, well mostly Chad because they don't let me run the equipment. We've, well, when our backhoe was down, when did we do that waterline fix by your house? A month ago. We had nothing to use for equipment, so we had actually, we'd rented one from Reed's, an excavator. And so we were talking back and forth that it'd be nice to have an excavator for us when we're doing these water projects for a couple of reasons. That, like, we had one water break, main breakdown in front of JR's where, what was it, 11 feet down, Chad? Nine feet down? So the backhoe was struggling for that. And our backhoe's started to, you know, we've had two issues with it this year. We had the break and the boom there that Mark saw that. And then we just had an issue with some hydraulic hoses on it. And Chad had to order a part that he couldn't get from the manufacturer. So I know that we had talked briefly about this at one meeting. I don't remember how long ago now, but it was pretty brief.
I tried looking it up in the minutes, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it was the day that you came and looked at the backhoe.
Was that when we looked at the backhoe?
So we've just been kinda kicking tracks, I guess we can't say tires. And had, actually tried a couple from, or one from Champlain Valley Equipment, looking at used machines and we stumbled across this Kubota down in Rutland Town. So, you know, I just have that in front of you and, you know, we've looked at what we've done for, I actually have attached on the back here of when we've rented excavators, what the costs are and you see they're gonna be highlighted in there. I think with doing all of our better roads and our grants and aid work on all of our gravel roads, that this would be a very nice piece of equipment to have to assist us in that.
Mark, can I just answer what you were just talking about, looking through the minutes? If it's not on the agenda and it's just in conversation, I can't put it in the minutes.
I think we talked about it.
I thought it was a selectman comments, which...
I could play the video if we wanted to.
Whatever, I remember it.
We talked about a trailer, do we have a trailer or something to haul?
Yeah.
We need to get a trailer and I, we're look, I've got some people looking for trailers, but we need to see if we have something to haul first before we buy the trailer, so.
Well, we had a small trailer, right, you said already? And we were...
We wanted to haul that thing.
Well, this is, no, this is 18,000 pounds.
Yeah, we do have a small trailer, but it's a...
This machine's 18,000 pound machine?
10,000 pound trailer.
Because when we were originally talking about it, I thought we were talking about a small excavator that could be used on that trailer. Wasn't that our discussion?
We had mentioned that, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But we kinda need to load the tandem and one we tried from Champlain Valley.
Couldn't reach?
No, it was a 50. Bobcat 50. And no, it was, it maxed out trying to load the tandem. If we're doing any work, productive work, we don't want to load the tandem, so it's kinda...
So we're looking at this kind of a different approach, kinda like what we did the first response cruiser. And we can't really put an RFP out for used equipment. You know, it's just, it doesn't really work that way. But we're just looking around to see what we could get for, you know, a good value and deal. And what else have we looked at? We looked at a few Bobcats. We looked at a Dusan. And this was, this was right next to the Dusan and so, you know, I don't know if Chad has anything else to add or if you guys have any questions for us about it, but...
Is this one on rubber?
No, steel.
So I guess, well, I usually can't keep my mouth shut, so I, one, I think we'd be better off with something on rubber than steel for our roads. That's my personal opinion. And two, I think we should look into, maybe if we're gonna upgrade something, upgrading the backhoe at this point in time.
Someone, sorry Dave, go ahead.
Because, I mean, we need, if our loader goes down, we need something that's dependable to load trucks in the winter. And if we're having issues with this backhoe, I mean, yeah, most of them have been on the back end so far, but the front end's hooked to the back end. I'm just worried, you know, we get an excavator, I'm sure an excavator would be handy and I'm sure there's a lot of things we could use it for, but I'm just not sure that we need to get an excavator before we upgrade our backhoe to something more reliable. That's my thoughts.
So our big concern was because the only type bucket we have like that is on the backhoe that when it was down and we had, wait, didn't we have two waterline breaks that week? Or was that, no, I guess it was the week before and we had those two on seven, that we had nothing. So, you know, then we had to rent a piece of equipment. If we had an excavator, because we have the loader, a new loader, that we would have the backhoe as backup in case either of those were down. But right now, we have not, we don't have any backup piece of equipment if something's in the shop. And I know we went through it even with trucks this winter, you know, if one truck's down and we're plowing it, you know, I mean, at least we have something we can back, use. I mean, every truck, pretty much every truck we have is plow ready, so, you know, that's awfully handy to have that we, in case equipment's down, we have a backup. So that was the reason that we were really looking at it this way was, well, you know, if we're not using the backhoe as much, it's not gonna take as much wear and tear on it. The excavator would certainly be better on when we're doing our stone line ditching and like when we did that section of Oxbo last year, Chad rented, what size was that one? It was like a, yeah, you know, this one could, this size machine could do that work for us in-house too and we wouldn't have to rent for that, so.
How many hours are on the backhoe, Chad?
I don't know exactly, but over 3,500.
And how long have we had it?
So 2016.
3,500 hours on it. And how many of those hours are hole, do you think, the percentage?
90.
90?
Probably.
Okay.
And what's in the equipment replacement fund?
Uh, 283, I think. I have it written down here somewhere. 223, $223,278.76.
So we spent, what, 22,000 in rental fees over, what, seven years?
About three grand a year.
That's not what I got mine, I got 16. We must have a different number that came in the second pack.
I didn't have the second page, it was 18,790.
Does this include 24 bills? That wasn't on this original, that wasn't on the original one, okay. Yeah, that's what I was doing my division on.
Yeah, so I'm saying that's...
It's all the same, you guys have all the same sheets, they're attached to the...
Yeah, there's two pages.
Yeah, there's two pages, yeah, there's two pages.
It shows 24 on the second page.
Yeah, I got 500.
And you've got like 30...
$500?
3,400 on the last page and...
Is that a backhoe? Oh, they highlighted it, it doesn't say excavator.
All the highlights are excavator.
Yeah, these weren't, these weren't highlighted on what came through. Alright, so I, this is what, I got emailed.
Oh, it was emailed, right.
Color printer.
Gmail this. Alright, so what was the total, what was the total on excavator use?
22,000.
22,000 for seven years?
Yeah.
So 3,000 a year.
How much of the dig and chat that you've done with the backhoe could be done with the excavator? All of it?
Fail, but yeah. If not all, majority of it. Between the waterline breaks, where breaks, ditching projects.
Faster and safer too.
So 3,000 a year is not really very outrageous for renting, as far as I'm concerned. I'm having a hard time on an $80,000 ticket for 3,000 a year. I do see the point in having a backup. Do you, is that backhoe something you think you really want to hold on to? I mean, I know you've had trouble with the hole. It's not many hours, 3,500 hours for the amount of trouble?
Yeah, no, it's not many hours. I mean, the biggest issue there, what was it? Two, three years ago there when it had to go back up, had that metal in the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I mean, obviously a hose breaks, it hoses a hose that's gonna break and stuff.
Right, right.
The worst thing with this backhoe is closest service is in Concord. So I mean, you know, it's expensive getting it here for service, bringing it big. Or if it has to go to them.
Well, if it has to go, it's a lot of money to track it.
Yeah, and we're out like... It's definitely a machine that we need to have reliable because, I mean, there's something every day that we can be using it for, projects and whatever, but...
Now, was that originally bought in Middlebury when they, Green Mountain Tractor had JCB? No?
No, I didn't know they did. It was up in Burlington.
Oh, okay.
It was up Burlington or something.
Yeah, 7, well, they'd have been out by 17, yeah. Oh.
Up in that area when we bought it. Then they got bought out, but it's all the equipment. You know, how equipment companies go, so.
Oh, yeah.
So you're thinking hanging on to that even though the trouble we've had with it is a better backup than looking at a new home?
We haven't had major trouble, well, other than that boom, I guess that's kinda major and distant. But we have a brand new one, so we should get another eight years out of it. And using that last, should last longer.
Brand new hole on it?
Just the, just the extended...
Stick?
Yeah, it was busted.
It did?
Broke right out.
Is it a, extend a hole?
It was extended out and, yeah, about a foot, foot and a half up from the bottom there.
So is it possible we're doing work with that that we really shouldn't be doing with an excavator?
The two water breaks and we were doing a little stumping with it and pulling some fence out when it happened, so, nothing. I don't, you know, I don't think we've overworked it.
Well, there was a, I can't think of the name of it, where it broke. There's, there was a hole in the, in the, housing in the boom itself and it broke right at that weak point. You could see it, it had stress cracks. There was a part that was, a lot of it was oxidized and then when it snapped off, you could see that.
It was really a poor design.
It was, it was in the making.
I found where it was discussed on February 21st that Mark had asked the question. Mark discussed the possibility of the highway department needing a new excavator in the near future and would like to discuss this with the next budget process.
So it is, we do have in our highway capital fund, there's significant funds there for us if the board so chooses to move forward with it.
But is this the right piece of equipment though? I guess that's my question.
Well, that's, that's my question too, whether we should upgrade the backhoe at this point in time so we know that's dependable and then in a future time.
So my concern is just looking at it money-wise is that if we're gonna get a backhoe, we're probably gonna buy a new one, right? What's a new backhoe cost? 100 and...
120, 160.
And getting into this with, you know, something that's two years old with 500 hours on it for about 50% of the cost of a new one. And it just seems like that would be a better route to go for, you know, just financially. I mean, we've had good luck with, you know, we bought that mower used and, I mean, it's...
I don't think there's any doubt that the Kubota is a good, is a good piece of equipment. I do have questions about, that you brought up about running those tracks on the road. Are we gonna get some breaking on the side? Do we, have any concern about that?
Are they street tracks on it, do you know?
They're, I don't know, they're metal.
They're steel, they're pretty, they aren't, there's no Grouzers, it's, they're flat tracks.
They're flat, so it's not gonna...
Yeah, so it's not, no, but it's still harder than rubber.
Yeah, but the edges are rounded, so they're not square on the outside of the path.
They were around those big claw ones that are gonna...
Yeah.
And we do do a fair amount of work on gravel roads versus the pavement too with, you know, I mean, that's where all our grants and aid work is basically happening is on all of the gravel sections, so. Like, I'm just thinking last year we did all of Humphrey Road, right? Pretty much all of it, there were only, you know, so. It's, a lot of our road maintenance is on gravel roads too.
Come by, how are we gonna get it there? Well, the trailer's the next part of this motion.
Yeah, well, we can find a trailer, we've got enough people looking for it and, I mean, we could look at a smaller machine, but that's why like we're able to try some down here and, you know, Chad and, Chad and Greg were talking, like even some of the smaller ones that, to rotate, what were you saying, like because they go 360 degrees, they get a little more unstable unless you're, unless you don't have the tracks, you know, perpendicular to your cab, so.
I think the one we tried had the, was like the zero tail swing, so it didn't have that extra...
The weight, oh, the weight.
So you said that 50 wouldn't reach the tandem, but it would reach our other truck, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, the small, I mean, the Chevy and the International, those.
You still need to be able to... But I mean, that single axle. I mean, instead of trench box, so an 18,000 pound machine is probably the smallest machine you could have to send a trench box and work safely with a water sewer line. So, you know, with the trailer, you're gonna put a trench box on, load the excavator and go fix something or do you have to work on a dirt road and rip rapping? You get it with a twist wrist, you have a steel trap machine that's much more stable and more productive. I mean, nobody buys backhoes. The only people I see running them are...
So if I could ask, who are you?
She knows a little about it.
I don't know you, John.
Yeah. So we have, we have a site division at Neil and Marine.
I've seen your letters, I know exactly where you are.
And I've had a few years with Markowski's before then.
Alright, thank you.
Does this come with a trenching bucket or a cleanup bucket too?
Yeah.
There's a trenchy bucket.
There's a trench and a cleanup. And a blade angles too.
All angle blade on it.
Sure looks like a good deal.
Well, the machine's clean, there's really nothing.
Nice, it was, it was repo.
I went and walked through it, so it's...
Yeah, no, it looks to be in good shape, you know. We went down originally, looked at the Dusan and then that was next to it, so.
Right, yeah.
Almost all the manufacturers right now are offering 0% for three years at least too. So I don't know if you've looked at any new machines.
On new?
On new, yeah, but still if you finance...
I didn't know if we, does the town really finance machines here though? Just, because we have, we have a lot of capital funds for every department. It seems like, it seems like we just have paid cash for everything, right?
Typically.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, we don't have any, I don't think we have any equipment loans out right now.
So did we just talk to Gardner and this is the price he gave us?
No, he started higher than that and we got down to 83. So I, I did, I did get online, I can't remember the name of the website, someone that sells all the heavy equipment and everything. And just looking at this model with, actually some that were older with higher hours on them was more or less in the 90s than the 80s, so these were still running like 100, 105, so.
So new Kubota 57, they just told me the day was 90, 91 with a cap.
This is an 80.
Yeah, just for a point. I was just told that price this week when I was at a Reggie's Open House seat.
Oh, I think this one, if I, if I looked it up right, is about 135,000 to 40,000 new.
Where was it used before, 500 hours on it?
It was privately owned, that's all we were told. It was, it was repossessed.
Yeah.
Oh, Gardner said they put a new window in it. Is there something else to it? Funny way to put a new bucket on it, one of the buckets is all dented up, but it's got new glass in it, so.
Did anybody check the oil for filings or anything like that, if this is a repo?
I know they went through it, he brought it, so I think he brought it to town line to have a gonster. I shouldn't, I shouldn't assume that, but I'm quite sure that, I think he told us that, right? It went, it went somewhere to get us there last night. Yeah.
Somebody told you that.
Or what do you want to do with it?
I don't think I have anything else.
You gotta decide tonight or not?
I, I don't, I think we need to think about this a little more, to be honest with you. I mean, there's pros and cons on both, but...
How long is the quote grid for?
Tomorrow. I mean, it's, well, it's used, you know, I don't think he wants to hold on to it. Actually, when I, when I was there to get the quote sheet, someone was down there looking at it and he sold the guy one of the JCBs, so. I don't think it's gonna last long.
It won't last. No. But I can...
I don't want to sound like a used car salesman though, like, you know, 12 people have looked at it and we need to act on it now, but she told me 13 today, but... Maybe nine people have looked at it though, you know? I'm just kidding. But she did say other people had looked at it when I was down there. It's a nice piece of equipment.
Yeah, I think if we called Gardner, he'd give us a few days.
But we'd have to wait till next meeting to decide.
Well, it's next week.
It's next week.
It might be worth a field trip and a little discussion before we... What do you think, Tom?
Can we do it on contingency, having the oil tested for any filing?
That, that service report probably tells us.
Would we have, I'd like to see that report. I mean, that, that's a good indication if there was something wrong with it.
Right.
Which there probably isn't, I would hope, but...
Chad, did you run it?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't move it, but I did get in and run the bucket best I could because it was set for the cat controls.
Oh. So everything's backwards.
And I didn't want to hit another machine, so.
They have a reverse button?
I didn't take control for it, so.
Underneath the seat usually.
Yeah, switch it.
Are they?
Use the electronics and stuff.
Mine's the old one underneath.
Turn a key, yeah.
For what, little?
I think if it's a good deal, I don't have a big problem with it, as long as we got the money.
I know, we have the money, it's a good deal, it'll get used and we can make, we can make it contingent upon... I know, we have the money. It's a good deal. It'll get used and we can make, we can make it contingent upon whatever.
I can, I'm sure he'll give us the service records on it. I have no problem getting those from him.
I'd, I'd like to take a minute and look at it and if we, if we can get an extension for a week at least so we can.
Go tomorrow morning.
Maybe we should just go down together.
Do that.
Yeah. I went down and looked at it, but I didn't run it. I didn't go in and get them out.
I haven't seen it myself. I rode by it, I think, saw it.
Yeah, it's right out front, yeah. No, it's set back. Oh, he must have pulled, I bet he pulled it then.
Buzz out.
They got it back.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
It was out back this morning. Not behind the building, but it's set back.
It's just right behind where it was.
I still think we should make, we should vote with a contingency based on if you want, if you wanna do independent inspections on it, but otherwise we'd have to wait till the next meeting.
That's a thought, but.
We've done that before where it's, you know, we're not backing ourselves into.
So if we make a contingent tonight and then Dan and Mark go down tomorrow and.
All right, if it's acceptable, then we can.
Okay with that? And then if it's not good, it's not good and we don't.
Um, I, I, I take your expertise on it.
I'd like ten minutes to talk to Gardner.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why we put a contingency.
Well, yeah, 'cause I.
I mean, his price.
Oh.
That and.
Sure. Sold him that bill.
Sure.
That's a good.
Again, I mean, we can.
Oh, yeah.
You can bait it, you can do it with not to exceed.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, yeah, we can make our cap and then.
Not to exceed.
He was asking more for it.
Yeah, I know. Whatever.
Anyone wants to make some motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion, at least get it on the floor.
Yeah, all right, so to, um.
Not to exceed eighty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
And contingent upon further inspection. And I would second that.
Now you can discuss it.
Further discussion.
I really don't wanna move on anything until I've got a really good chance to go through it.
I'd like the opportunity to look at it and talk, talk to Gardner.
Right, that's why the contingency is built into the motion.
About the price as well.
Yep.
If we vote, vote on this, it's a matter of public record.
Yep.
That's why we don't.
But it says not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And contingent on inspection.
Inspection, so if you guys feel not good, we don't buy it.
Right.
That's the motion.
You can go down tomorrow and say yes or no. We don't want it.
Yeah. And I'll go with what you guys say. If you say no, it's a no. That would be my rule. If it's a yes, it's a yes.
Hate to lose it in the meantime as well, but I would.
I'll even drive you guys there tomorrow if you wanna go.
Your car?
My car's coffee.
Gotta have long arms to reach the door or something.
All right, any further discussion?
There's no second on it, so you can't.
Yeah, at least a second.
Yep, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
No.
Well, I know.
Were you a late, a late?
No, 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 I'm a no. I'm a, I'm a no.
So an a.
Yep. No, it passed. No, it passed. It was three to two. That's fine.
Okay.
But I'm not moving on that.
Okay, now we have the approval of, um, the State of Vermont Maintenance Agreement from the Highway Division.
So this is from segment one on the intersections of our town roads that intersect with Route Seven. Um, that they're done with what they needed to work there and that we need to basically release the state from any dis damages or claims from it and that we agreed to maintain our own roads. I would need a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then we go, letter of intent for municipal road grant.
So this is our grants and aid program that we do every year for gravel roads, um, on the board. Some of you guys have approved it every year. Um, we find out what we get from that, I don't know, eight or ten thousand, but you already think we usually get, right?
Um, well, this year is eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand. So that, you know, comes to us for getting all our segments, our segments in line with like Champlain, Toad TMDL and hydraulic, hydrologically connected areas, so we've been doing it every year for quite a while. So, looking for approval on that.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any questions on the orders? You have the ones that your, I think, general thing would have.
I haven't got any orders in there.
Was at your space there.
Alicia, can I ask, ask one of the attendees a question that might? John, were you looking for an update on Fire Hill? No?
Um, no, we, we read some updates, but I don't know if it's part of the agenda.
Well, I might as well just say it. I know it's not on the agenda, but, so Dave and I actually did some site visiting this morning. Um, the lower property, there's been significant cleanup on that one that we noticed today.
You mean the garbage that was all over scattered? Now it's in each bigger pile?
Um, no, they've actually taken a lot of stuff off, out of the yard and it, it looks like they tried to mow it. Um, the one on top of the hill, it was a twenty-seven eighty-three. There are, a vehicle gone. We did talk to the owner today. He's gonna have another vehicle out of there. Um, we had a complaint that there was trash up there and we, we couldn't see any garbage landing. There's a lot of stuff, but there wasn't garbage.
It wasn't garbage. I know when I was up there like a month ago, there were bags of garbage on top of vehicles and in a pile, but that was not there today.
I didn't get payroll, so can I just.
There's three weeks of it. I don't have any.
In the minutes.
Look below.
What's that?
Mine was stuck below the pile.
Dave and I went up there today.
Yeah, and they do.
We drove up through and, I mean, on the lower property, there was actually some lawn that you can see.
Yeah, because they put it in a pile.
Oh, there it is, right there. There's the warrants.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where?
The pile of, by the trailers.
That, um, This is the trailer before Teresa's?
Yes.
Yeah, and the whole, like, the middle of it was all cleared out.
Because he put it into a pile by the trailers. Number one.
There was a pile of, there were, there were a bunch of cars that weren't there either, so, I mean, the whole yard was full of vehicles.
There was a pile of toys between the road and the trailer.
There's a whole bunch of vehicles. Oh, hey, you got some pictures?
Did you find it?
If you're talking about that, that's.
It was low with, uh, liquor.
With the.
We went off topic here. We went off the rails.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all payroll.
Liquor board stuff, it's underneath this.
Trash is still in the vehicles, yes. Yep.
Look to the back.
We're, this, this area is more cleaned up.
Do you want me to see if they, Alicia, you want me to see if they wanna use my office to talk about this?
Yeah.
Hey, Rich, do you wanna go to my office with, with them and, and talk about it?
Part of this meeting.
Yeah.
Just shut my door.
And there's the minutes.
Do you have it? I, I found it, but it was, I'm almost through it.
And you got the ones that were just from tonight that you got at your.
I didn't get any on the packet and I got, just found these tonight in the bottom, so I'm still trying to get through them.
The whole, if we email you the packet, you get everything that's in the envelope, Mark. It's the same thing.
I printed off the whole thing David wasn't on there.
I didn't see any orders, original orders in mine.
There was no orders on the email.
I think you guys should get deliveries.
Yeah, I, I think from now on, I think we'll just make sure that everyone has a paper copy on Friday.
'Cause I don't, all I have is the, um, excavator. From Nemrick and that's all I have. But I have the orders that were left for tonight. That's the only ones I have. There were nothing in the packet. And that's all that's in here.
So. The warrant wouldn't have been done until Monday because Ann and I were both out last week, so there should only be that one.
That one? Okay. That was given tonight?
Right.
Okay, so then everybody has everything. Do these just go to Alicia?
Um, that one is Alicia. Actually, yeah, um, I have to notarize that one from the state.
Okay.
We can do that after the meeting? I, I, okay.
Okay.
And then this is the conflicts of interest.
That everyone needs to sign. That's the one.
And that's the warrant.
Yep, there.
Dave, both the loads of stone for the fields that was in the rec budget, right?
Yep.
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 When you're ready, that's for everybody.
Where's where this?
That was just mixed in. It wasn't attached, it wasn't attached to anything.
It didn't report, it was like ten grand.
I'll sign that with Alicia.
It's our legal expenses, huh? That's all.
No.
All right, is that what it was? That was all three of them?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's everybody.
I think so.
Hold on.
Okay.
Well, we've got an extra week, so there's a lot more of them.
What, what's the TNL Incorporated move new equipment vehicle? The thousand dollars? Do you know? Is that on the vehicle purchase we had? Was that the police vehicle?
For license and stuff, is it?
Is that the police vehicle?
First response, first response vehicle.
So what's TNL?
So that's the folks that put on all of the, they took off, they took the equipment off that old suburban and put it on the Durango.
Yep, all right, thanks.
Yeah, we were able to use pretty much all of that. The only thing we had to get different was that light bar, which we got from Craig for like five hundred bucks, so we did all right on that one.
Okay, I'm good with everything now. Finally, sorry.
That's fine.
Is it Durango or Explorer?
Durango.
It's Green Maple LLC.
Solar.
It's where we buy our solar.
Solar power. I asked the same question like three times.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a newbie question. I asked the same question.
They went through it with me? Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Solar off, and I think that it raises in Chester. It's a long ways from here.
Long ways from here.
Yeah, it's kinda ridiculous. Long way from the sun to travel.
That's when that stuff first started.
Right, yeah.
I know, was that debated?
Huh?
Was that debated?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, and the one here in Pittsburgh goes to Berry or something, right?
Yeah.
All right, I don't sign that one. We snuck out, man.
He's over there sleeping.
I know.
I gave you that list of questions, right?
Yeah. All right, well, while you're finishing signing, um, if there's nothing else, we'll, um, we'll come out of our select board meeting to open as the liquor board and we have, um,
Helen did add some today.
One, two.
I believe they're all for Cluckin Cafe.
Kubotas for tobacco. Rollin Rooster for outside consumption.
Keith's.
Keith's.
Keith's, there's tobacco and.
Tobacco and.
Two?
And, yeah.
Second class, like, second class.
Liquor and then tobacco.
Can we just hold them?
Yeah, I'll just send them back around. That way we won't have to send them, we'll send those back around. Got too many papers on this one.
Unless you have a good storage area, though.
Um, not really. Pass those.
Oh, and then Dollar General. Tobacco. I think that's all of them.
Thanks, Tom.
So you have five?
Hold on. Except, did you see Kubota's in there twice? Is that just a?
I think Kubota's was just once, wasn't it?
Printed out twice? Or am I just getting myself all stuffed with my papers? Well, there is two printed out, but.
We voted on them last time.
Yeah, so I just, so, yeah.
So a point of rookie ignorance, is this something we do every year?
Yes.
Once a year, I mean?
Yeah.
Yep. The, and it's changed a lot this year, the way the businesses apply, so they have to apply online. Then it gets sent to Helen. Most of them, they can't pay for it until it comes to the board and the board approves and then goes back to the state and the state submits it back to the business owner and asks for mine.
Jeez.
So.
Just complicated.
Instead of filling out the application, here's your check, here's the state's check, goodbye.
Yeah.
State, well.
Help some friends out with it.
So there's one for tobacco and one for, for alcohol.
Alcohol, yep.
Third one.
Yep.
These with the back off.
I know, why does, why does it have DG Retail and Dollar General separately?
DG Retail is their corporate.
Right.
Dollar General is their DBA.
Need to get two separate.
If you noticed, um, the Sunoco is Champlain Farms as well.
Right, yeah.
So it goes Champlain Farms, DBA, whatever.
Okay.
Doing business as, yes.
And you should see that on Rollin Rooster and Cluckin Cafe too.
Yeah, I did reach out to Dollar General about the lights at the store shining into, so I've been back and forth with Matt from Dollar General on that. He's, he's usually pretty responsive, so he was gonna talk to their, their guys and we'll get those lights tipped back.
Good.
I know, they were supposed to have done that.
Years, yes, a year and a half ago.
I thought they did.
I started bringing that up. No, they. They did a lot of work here last year.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's what a certain person told us, but I'm not sure that was. There's one that's tilted up pretty good and I could see where they're complaining, so.
Do we need to do them individually or together?
No, no.
Those wind could have done it with the wind events we've had this year.
I'd like to make a motion. Adopt or approve all of these.
Okay.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Trying to come out of liquor, liquor board, so back into the select board meeting. Um, and if there's anything else, I would end our open part of select board meeting before we go into next discussion.